Yeah. Finished the meeting June 4, 2019. The board. We'll have our road comment made.
Mr. Rich, Mr. Mambal.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Seas, present. Chairman present.
We've got four of them. We'll have our prayer from Mr. Daly and our pledge by Mr. Seas.
Our Lord, as we come to you, Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord God, for this day. God, thank you for the blessings. God, ask you, Heavenly Father, Lord, as humble as we know how, God, for this meeting, God, for everybody to come together as one mind and one accord, God. Lord, we ask you, Heavenly Father, Lord, to bless each and every one in here, God. Lord, we thank you, we praise you for everything you do for us. Lord, we love you for everything you do for us. For it's in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'd like to approve the agenda for our June 4 theme. Got a motion in a second. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Next is public comments from citizens. We didn't have it signed up today. Number one, the motion to approve the signed resolution application regarding the 5311 program. This is for rural transportation. It's something that we sign every year. Ms. Thurman's here. If anybody has any questions for her.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Motion to appoint Ms. Allison Williamson to the Mountain Lakes Behavioral Healthcare Board. This was a letter that we had received. We had one opening in one letter. So with that, we need a motion to approve Ms. Williamson.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Number three, motion to accept hiring committee's recommendation for the vacant full-time EA2 position, grade eight, for Public Works Department.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion.
I'll second.
Got a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Motion to accept the hiring committee's recommendation for the vacant full-time HCM one position, grade four, for Public Works Department.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Got a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Number five, the motion to accept hiring committee's recommendation for two vacant temporary labor positions at the Jackson County Public Works Department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Number six would be a motion to approve a surplus of four vehicles in the sanitation department. There are 97 Ford F-150, 98 Ford F-150, 2006 Ford Ranger, 2012 F-150. Do you have any questions for Daryl about these? We took pictures in our last work session. And then we'll make a motion to take use the surplus. Got a motion.
I'll second.
Got a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Next would be the truck needs at sanitation.
Yes. Last meeting work session, you asked me to get us some quotes, so I can, you're happy to find the list of quotes that we received back. Let me look over those for a second.
You have recommendations?
Yes. If we choose local, I'd like to, number four at the bottom of the page, they have two fifty, 2019 crew cab. And if we was to choose to, just that, yeah, the local company, the 2019 F-250, and the price arounds over to the right.
How many vehicles per vehicle?
Four. I'd like to replace those four now. I won't surplus those other four out until I receive the other vehicles, because we just don't have them.
Right. Thanks, George. After I had looked through these today, they're all apples for apples. If you'll notice, number four is just a little bit higher, but it's a local, being there versus going into Tennessee. And there ain't a lot of difference, so I would rather use our local business than I do Tennessee. And we're within the mid-low.
Yeah, it's less than $1,000 per vehicle difference in, you know, the local maintenance.
I'll make that motion.
Are these up?
I'm sorry.
All of these, all of them will be four wheels or out.
Yes. We'd really like for us to look at trying to maybe turn these vehicles around a lot faster than we are. We're buying off a state bidding, you know, we can get the vehicles a lot cheaper than the public can. And I know with their dock trucks, we're doing that, and we're averaging maybe $10,000 a truck per year by only keeping on a year. And we're keeping brand-new vehicles when we're not having maintenance costs, so.
We have talked to the same company that we do that with.
About offering new?
Yeah, they're, we have looked at the 12, 18 months, and give us a guaranteed price so we can keep them rotated, keep newer vehicles at no cost.
I just want to stay on top of that, because, you know, some of these have got, you know, 300, 200, 300,000 miles on them, and, you know, we're not going to get anything out of those vehicles, probably spent the cost of them again on maintenance.
Yeah. That's the reason we're going to try to start as we go forward, even at the road department. I'd like to see the sheriff's department get involved in it, if that's possible someday, but I'd like to get to where we're turning these vehicles and keeping it where we don't have maintenance costs. It's just getting outrageous.
You have a comment, a motion? I'll second the motion.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Number eight, due to budget cuts, motion to approve closing the south side door of the courthouse effective June 6, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion. Give me a second.
Now, are we looking at revisiting this? If we charge out security costs to departments, I would kind of discuss, or?
Well, I mean, we can.
This is just for now?
Yeah, if it is for now, till we, if we have some kind of help in our budget.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Motion carries. Next, we're going to, instead of taking a break, we'll go right into our work session. Our discussion items for the commission. Number one, the 4th of July. Wanted to say about what everybody thinks about it. Is it going to be on a Thursday? Is everybody in the calendar? Any suggestions how you want to proceed on it? I think last year, or in some of the previous years, depending on how it ran, we would do Thursday or Friday.
I think since we can't give a raise every year, that is a perk that we need to kind of stick with it when we can. Anybody else have an opinion?
I agree with that. We gave, on August 2, Tuesday, a lot of times we gave Monday, a lot of times when it fall on Thursday, we give Friday, for that very reason, because, you know, that's over the years that I've been able to give raises. How does this, how will this work you out? Sheriff's Department, Public Works, we're off on Friday already.
It'll be reserved on Wednesday in the festival Friday allowance. For us to pick a little work in new, opt to get paid for, or take it out every day off.
It's a hard situation for some of them, but Sheriff's Department, I know, don't have that luxury of just everybody leaving. So we usually make it up into the pay and overtime and comp time. All right. If there's no other discussion on that, we'll put that on the next week's agenda meeting for the approved July 4th and 5th. Next, the Northern Heights subdivision.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. I passed out a picture earlier, and that's going to be what I'll discuss. It's basically an extension of a previously approved subdivision, Northern Heights is a previously approved subdivision by this body, and this is an extension that we're requesting approval on, or that the developers requesting approval on. It's two additional lots, and it's a road extension, basically, as it pertains to our, us and our regulations. So we were involved in this extension as far as, as it relates to meeting our specification. The base work was reviewed prior to paving, during and after paving was also reviewed, and it has been a one-year. So there's a one-year maintenance period, statutory 12-month period that must be met, and then the payment condition is reviewed after that, so. What you see is a present-day photo of that extension. It's basically two additional lots, an extension of prior cliff road in Northern Heights subdivision. So I have the plat with me if there are any questions.
Where does it look, Peter?
It's Swearingen Community.
Swearingen?
Yes, sir. On the bluff there. So if there are any questions about it, or if you'd like to see the plat, I have that with me also.
So basically, it is just very little footage, looks like.
Approximately 500 feet additional on Brockly Road for that, and then also that cul-de-sac there. And the dirt you see on the pavement, that's just tracking. They're working on the lots down in the end. But it'll be, it'll be the subdivision extension in this, including the road, the road work that we're requesting approval for.
Anybody got any more questions for Mr. Campbell? We don't have any more questions. We'll put down the next week's agenda. Number three, the council and agents surplus in their bus, number 288. As I say, any more than, do they add just surplus in one bus, correct?
Right.
So if they have any questions, my dear, Ms. Thurman?
Has this been replaced?
I'm sorry.
This is just the extra bus that we had?
We've gotten our new bus in, and we have a certain length of time to dispose of the one that we're replacing.
If there's no other questions, we'll put number three on next week's meeting also. Number four, big organizational chart changes for sanitation.
On the organizational chart changes, what we're looking to do is, is the growth and the collections that we're continuing to improve out there, and the added work in the comp costs. What I'd like to do here is on the organizational chart, and we're going to be one adding a position for another clerk that we've been needing for quite a long time. And as far as organizational, it would let the office staff, office personnel, report to the grid, to our office manager, and then it would, basically disorganize everything, such as the mechanic here reports to me, the rapporteur reports to me, and his guys report to him, and then the office manager would report to me, with the guys in the office reporting to her.
That's just different from what we've already. Next week, could you make sure to have a?
Yeah, basically, yeah, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, we just didn't have this leg. It should have been this, she was already office manager. That don't change. She's still same, but we just didn't have the chart, just wasn't done correctly.
And what that done caused a little bit of confusion, this, you know, not everything went through one centralized location, so we're just trying to keep everything smoother, and everything's going through one basic computer where everybody knows what's going on and keeping everybody on the same page.
And we had an issue, you know, some, some were coming to Daryl, some were coming to Ms. Green, and so sometimes they didn't know what was going on. So this way, it just, it puts the chain of man where it's supposed to be. And I can, you have us the old, the actual chart for next week. If everybody found, we'll put it on the meeting for next week, we'll go in, we'll see something and don't lie. Next would be the clerk, too, for sanitation department. Kind of hit on that already, but you want?
I didn't make sure, since they're both accounted together. But yes, this just gives us another position at the office to fill in. The way it is now, we have just two clerks out there, and if one's out, all the work really falls on one, or if by chance one of them wants to quit, then we've got six, eight weeks before that position's filled, plus training time. If we, and then we've taken on a lot of extra work with our collection process that we're revamping now. With this being said, then it would keep our work a little smoother and wouldn't put so much on one person from time to time.
I have spent a lot of time out there the last couple of years, and he is great about that, with the additional work that we took in from the health department that we're doing now. With, we got some additional work, it looks like it's going to be coming up, actually where that person is needed, very bad. And he does have money in their budget for this.
Make sure everybody understands, too, that sanitation department is a enterprise fund, a stamp loan, it works on its own basis. I know with all the time, us being short of dollars, you know, this net and a fed, the general fund. Make sure everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, thanks for that.
I want to commend the department for the changes in their collections. I think they brought in plus to $50,000 in the last month, additional dollars that, you know, bad debt set us there, plus those folks have obligated to pay, was that a third or a fourth? Did you buy the bill by a third?
About three. We'll try to cut it in half and work at, was, I mean, if they can and need an extra, then we go ahead and give them one or two, you know, we'd figure them out.
We should have an additional $100,000 coming in over the next two quarters.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So, you've done a great job, and I appreciate it.
Anybody have anything? Number six would be TBA and Lewis, field requirements. Mr. Manning, you want to, that's something you want to tell us a little bit about, man we go for America. Got a sprout in the audio, I'm sorry.
It's all right. In your folder, you'll find the current bill. There've been a lot of questions in the past on how the TBA fund are distributed, so I'm going to let everybody have a copy, because this is the most recent act of the past, and this was one that included resolving that extra fund that they had over there in the delegation office. There's a little over a million dollars in there that was dispersed with this bill, and it explains in this bill how it was dispersed and where the money went. So I want everybody to make sure that you had a copy of that. And then it specifically tells how the county has to distribute that monthly check. So everything should be in this bill. I know it's a little, several pages long, a little complex to just read, but take that copy with you, and if you've got any questions on that, feel free to send me about that. But we get the check once a month, distributed once a month based on the spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet's taken from this bill. Any questions or any other points you'd like to point out on that?
Yeah, one page, the last page, where we talk about the remaining payments of Jackson County Legislative Delegation, and goes on down. Is each one of these entities supposed to be turning in a budget to campaign or receiving these dollars?
Yes, sir.
And is all of them, or is any of them turning in a budget to receive these dollars?
No, sir.
We have requested, I've been here, this is my seventh year, we've requested several times, and I've never seen any of those.
I have not. It's something that's just, when I started, there was no budgets coming in first year I started, so. And I haven't seen any come in. Very specific in there, too, if anyone is receiving TBA funds should be providing that. So there may be some news to some of those entities out there that just never did submit one.
So the way, if I'm reading this right, if the entity don't turn in a budget, then we can, we could deposit that money into the general fund?
According to this law, that's what it states, the following year. And one other point, I just did a highlight on the back page for you guys, when that fund was resolved as pursuant to this act, a little million and $54,000 in the fund that had built up. $393,353 went to the EDA, $360,000 went to the two school boards, and the remainder, you can read where it was split up among several different entities in there. Basically, 75% went to the EDA and the two school boards. So just, just for your knowledge.
All right. Any of the commissioners having suggestions on how we need to proceed on this? Because it don't look like we're getting the documentation we're supposed to be getting.
Well, there need to be noted, but there may be certain people different in charge than used to be, communication.
It's good, thank you.
Labor communication.
We'll be glad, me and Mr. Manning can get a letter out to each one of these requesting another time that your budget be provided to the commission.
We can get a letter out, plus attach some copy of this bill.
Yes, sir.
For them also.
And are y'all seeing, if I understand correctly, Mr. Vennett, well, we've requested them before, never, maybe we need to do that certified to make sure this is not being tossed in junk mail or something, and it isn't?
No, no doubt.
And we hold someone accountable, you did see this?
Yeah, I have. Myself, I didn't realize of, of any they were, but on some of the bigger ones, I have personally emailed for question budgets, and I've got, you know, answers saying that they could give them to us, but it's been three months, I still haven't got anything. But that's a good idea. We can, we'll make sure that they get a copy of this letter along with this bill, so that they have any question, they have a copy of the bill.
I think it'd be a good idea, and that way we'd have something to look back in the files, too, to know if they sent a request in, or what.
If everybody's good, we'll, we'll just put this back on the next work station. Got to give us a couple of weeks to get it out, see if we get any response from them. That completes our items on the work station. Next would be reports from staff. Mr. Manning?
Nothing else, thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. I just want to give an update on some projects, if I may. I'll start with County Road 59. I think it was mentioned in our last meeting. At the time of our last meeting, it was in the current period, and the remaining items of work, or the strapping items, that's our federal aid project, they go from County Road 16 to the Cap County line. It's now 100% complete, so we'll be working on the final estimate and the final documentation for that. County Road 61, the next federal agency servicing project for a Piska school zone. We're in, scope of, the scope of work stage is complete, and we're in the P E R, that's Project Engineer Record, where we define some of the parameters in the project, and we'll be pursuing the school board agreement for the school lots. That'll be the next, the next hurdle in that project, so. School board agreements for those school lots and the school zone work. County Road 77, as you recall, that's the second project near, near Swearingen Community. So we stalled up, we got stalled up a little bit on that item number for that sign, if you remember, it had that curve ahead, LED embedded sign. So we're working through ALDOT on getting that item number established. That was, it was a little non-standard there, and then it'll go through the plan review stage, so hopefully not, not too much longer on that. County Road 43, so this is going to be the S T project, that's hydro demolition, the bridge, hydro demolition, bridge deck replacement. Those invitations to bid have been mailed out, been mailed out last week, so we're, we're on track for a bid opening on June 27. And then probably a month or two after that, we should see the work start on that project. County Road 38, guard rail replacement. You may have seen a posting about road closure on that section. That's because we're replacing guard rail on that bridge that's in bad shape. And then County Road 82, that, that bridge has been closed for some time. The center bend pilot casement's complete, the back wall, north, the bottom of that back wall construction is going on now, and that pilot casement's complete, so that project's moving along, but it still will remain closed for some time. And then also FEMA. I'll talk FEMA in a minute. So last month, if you remember, we had a damage inventory meeting and recovery scoping meeting. That was all with our FEMA folks that will likely carry us on through this, this process where we are now. So next, kind of following that flow chart down, are the site inspections. So those are scheduled for June 18th and 19th. FEMA personnel will be here looking at all of the damage sites, so that'll basically be comprised of the large slide sink areas along with three different locations where we have drainage structure damage, where we'll actually be replacing and upsizing drainage structures, so they'll want to see those, too, in detail.
That was June 18th and 19th?
Yes, ma'am. June 18th and 19th.
Just 17 involved in any of that, too. Reason I ask, because I had approached me a hundred of late.
Yeah, so 17 is, is, that'll be through FHWA, the ER, emergency relief funding, and to give you an update on it, I'm glad you asked, the geophysical work is done, it was completed last week, so they're processing that geophysical information. That was that multi-channel sound wave analysis and electroresist, resistivity tomography. Both of those processes are complete, so they'll be processing that data this week, Thursday and Friday, the Geotech group will be in doing the drilling, so. I will look forward to those results and then getting that out for competitive proposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Could you make sure the maintenance gets the sign out, as soon as possible, the closing on the door? I think there's already a sign made from last time they did it. They get that out, get some signs up on that door so people know about it, and kind of our local papers to get that out as soon as possible.
Oh, well, I'm actually having an idea made, so, but I can get them to do some temporarily until we get that signed in. Sure will. Thank you. Mr. Seas? Ms. Gilbert?
I just want to say I hate that I missed the trash day Saturday. I was in recovery, sorry. How'd that go? Am I talking?
And Mr. Campbell, um, I haven't been able to go out with you guys this year yet, but on the eighteenth and nineteenth, I should be recovering enough from my second surgery to join you, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Big chill will be red, right?
Uh, maybe not that far.
Mr. Campbell? Darryl, anything?
Yes, I fell short on time a little bit today. And this came up toward the midday, uh, I would like to, I'd like to request we could add or have, if we might, if we want to proceed with this, I need to make us a lot of change in my budget, it won't affect the budget, nothing at all, but I just need to make this, got me a little bit hard this year, and I just need to move some of the, you know, just things about.
Okay, we can put, if the Commission's okay with it, we'll put sanitation budget on next work session. Seth, do you want to do that?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? All right, with that, I need a motion to sit here.
I need a motion.
Keep saying. All those favors say aye. All opposed?
Video's rolling here, a couple of questions on this, the TBA and lieu of tax requirements, uh, if they don't, the different agencies submitting questions to you, or submitting budgets to you, uh, are you including the EDA, the hospital, and Board of Education on that? Since I know they're in the bill, they have specific amounts.
That's County EDA, um... Roseberry Rescue, libraries, community feeding centers, Jackson County Conservation District, Ernst Pruitt Center of Technology, uh, County Council on Agents, the Hark, the Boys and Girls Club, Scotty Bird, Michael Scott Learning Center, Jackson County, CTA, Senior RX, which was listed?
The distribution of those funds, they're come directly out from the commission?
Yeah, it's, well, it's through the TBA fund.
Right. What, what's the bill number on that?
First red, twenty-seven, eighteen, I say Senate Bill three four seven.
Senate Bill three four seven?
Yes, sir.
What, what was the, uh, the date? Senate Bill three four, okay, that was, uh...
February twenty-seventh, eighteen.
Now, another question, Tim, uh, the, uh, let's, let's say the EDA, uh, and, uh, for instance, the EDA, uh, ambulance services and that, uh, they're separate corporate entities of, of the county, how, how are you gonna ask for their, since, since their funding is entirely outside of the county commission, how are you gonna ask for their, uh, budget and?
What's going on? Always have a question.
I got you.
I mean...
And if they don't supply it to you and tell you what?
I mean, the law says they have to.
That law says they have to supply you a budget?
Yeah.
Before you issue that, that fund?
Right.
Okay. All right, law must, hey, there was one other, one other thing I wanted to ask you, the, the trucks, uh, for sanitation, what was that, what was that cost?
What else?
The trucks on sanitation, what was the, that total cost on those?
They wouldn't have told, or it was, he had a broken down for truck.
F two fifties, I think, uh...
Yeah, they're twenty-nine thousand, six seventy-six of these. F two fifty, crew cabs, four, four drive, it's a real good price.
That's twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
That's low price.
I know.
Twenty-nine thousand, six what?
Six seventy-six point five oh.
And who, who is that, is that local?
Harbin.
Harbin, okay. Ford or Chevy?
Ford, two thousand and nineteen Ford, F two fifty.
Okay.
Four by four, crew cab.
That's, that's low. That's low.
I know, that's real low, I get more than that in F two fifty.
Yeah, my, my two wheel cost more than that.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, was there something else here that cost, okay, I got that, uh, okay, I think that was it.